Welcome to regular session, uh, mayor and city council meeting. Six P M Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty four.
Sorry about that. Regular session, uh, mayor and city council, six P M Wednesday, uh, February seventh, twenty twenty four. City hall complex, council chambers, uh, call is pending to order. Would please rise for the pleasure of the lesions. Mr. Bonillas, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Invocation, what do we need? No, okay, uh, going to number four, call to public. I've got, uh, Mr. Stuart Milton, uh, would you please come to the podium? Press the button on the speaker or the mic. Thank you.
Hello, hello, can you hear me? Okay. Uh, Stuart Milton, uh, six two four North Sierra Avenue, uh, very close by here. Thank you all for being here on what used to be my family's land. Okay, I'll get right to the, uh, items. Um, Sierra Avenue is coming apart fairly quickly. We've got some subsidence from utilities that were installed a few years ago, and it's breaking up pretty quick with these rains. So I'm hoping that that can be attended to, um, at some point. I know that there's probably an agenda for the city for roadway repair that I'm not really aware of. But anyway, it needs to be looked into. Another very important thing is that we are a dead end street, and there is no signage at the end of the street indicating that it's a dead end street. At Pajarito, there's a sign that says, um, that indicates that it's a dead end street. But the large sign at the very end, uh, usually a, um, triangular sign has been missing for some years. And when it's dark and cars come down there for fairly quickly, if they overshot it, they will end up in the living room of an apartment down below. And we're just waiting for that day to happen. So I think it's very cheap insurance to get that sign back up. The pole is still there, so it's easy enough to do. Last item is, um, regarding water billing for five oh one Cs. I don't know if this may have been brought up before, but it seems that five oh one C, uh, corporations pay the same corporate rate as for profit, uh, institutions. I'm just wondering if at some point that could be looked into to where five oh one Cs might get a, a break on their water billing. Because we get the same rate regardless of whether we use any water at all. Okay, and that's all I have to say today.
Thank you, sir. Let's take a look at him. Uh, next we have William, uh, Armenta. Please come to a podium, uh, state your name and address, please.
My name is William Armenta, address four seventy one East Caixsonola. So I'm here to talk about, uh, the softball league. I started playing softball here in nineteen eighty nine, and, uh, there was a big community that supported that, uh, program. Uh, I am a two-time N I T champion, A W S champion, and I'm a current world champion. I've played a lot. And, uh, I'm here to ask for the program for the softball, so I can run it. And I'm asking for the city of Nogales Parks and Recreation Department to be a facilitator for the parks. Reason being is we don't, as a softball community, we don't believe in our programs because they don't, do not support us. There is no support. There is nothing for our young adults that come out of high school, no programs, to keep them out of drugs, out of alcohol. There is nothing. So I am here asking if I can have that opportunity to give back to the community that which the game has given me so much. Uh, don't understand why, uh, there is no softball here. Would like to ask the director and yourself, mayor, why? But again, if I could have that opportunity to bring back softball, to bring the community together and have that support. Because the community wants softball. I don't understand why it's not here. So.
Okay, thank you, we'll, we'll look into it. Anything else? Hold on, it's called to a public, we, we've got it, thank you.
Oh, yeah, so again, Mr. Doyle played against with, uh, the Doyle. No fear, a lot of teams that still here are here playing, but I'm also an umpire in a U I C up in Tucson and Phoenix. And they go and play in Tucson. So I don't understand why there isn't a program here where our own community can stay and leave the economy here instead of taking it to Tucson. I don't understand why there is no supporting that. You know, but again, I'm here, uh, have the experience as an umpire and as a U I C umpire in charge and as a director running, uh, uh, the sport softball. I'm currently the backup U I C in Sports Park up in Tucson in Aina, uh, posted over numerous tournaments. I have contacts with, uh, conference players. I also have contacts with, uh, CEOs that own their own back company. If I see talent here in Nogales, I could take that talent up to Tucson, up to Phoenix. There are scouts out there. You're in, uh, the president of Little League. There is no scouts here for those kids. There is no exposure here. There's exposure in Phoenix. I have contacts, I'm sponsored also, sorry, by, uh, Pro Orthopedic and Casino de Sol. So I know a bunch of outlets where I can take certain kids from the community, help them out, how exposing them to, uh, the game softball. You know, there is nobody here that has that, honestly. Be honest with you, nobody. I'm just trying to give back to my community what the sport has given me. A lot of exposure, you know, so I hope you take that into consideration.
We'll, Mr. Armenta, and we'll, we'll look into it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just really quick, I want to advise Mr. Armenta during the call to the public, we cannot respond or discuss anything, but we do have an item later in our agenda to discuss the softball league. So that's the reason you may have felt that there was no interaction. Thank you.
That no more call to a public, let this, okay. Uh, just for everybody, uh, we do have, uh, an order that, that, uh, considers of, of, of a pet, an animal. So before the presentation, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring this, uh, item A on orders, uh, where we're gonna, it's, um, item A, consideration and possible action of order twenty twenty four dash zero two dash zero zero four, an order of the city council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the retirement of police department narcotics canine, Donna, N P D. Can we have, uh, all in paper? Aye. Uh, both? Motion passive, Mr. Humanity still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for this opportunity and also the adjustment to the agenda. I'm here, uh, to present the canine Donna and her longtime handler Corporal, um, Viela. And just introduce you, if you haven't met before Donna. She came to the department as a four-year-old, uh, Belgian Malinois and has been with us since twenty nineteen. And it's now time for her to retire and enjoy retirement. So I'm gonna go ahead and present a plaque to obviously canine Donna, but it's gonna go to Corporal, to Corporal, uh, Viela. You know, she's been a successful asset to the department. You can see she's highly trained because she has, doesn't take her eyes off the handler. I mean, and, you know, she's been a wonderful, uh, dog, very friendly, approachable, opposed to some other canines that we've had that, you know, I can attest to that you can't even get close to the handler because they, they make sure you don't even get within arm's length. But once again, I appreciate the opportunity to recognize her, you know, her time with us. And now she gets to enjoy her life as a retired police canine. So without further ado, Corporal Viela.
There you go. And this plaque reads canine Donna, um, for retirement for her years of the audit service of the Nogales Police Department, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty three.
Go ahead, counsel, thank you.
I just have one question. I've always been curious, what happens to the retired, uh, dogs, in this case, Donna?
Well, for the most part, we try to keep them with their handler that they spent the most time with because she was briefly assigned to another handler. But we recognize that her time and for service was deteriorating because these dogs start, you know, getting mainly hip problems and joint problems. So we recognize it's time for her to retire, as we done with other canines. So if the handler is willing and Corporal Aviela is willing to, to keep her, they go home, they become a regular dog and enjoy the rest of their life as a family pet.
Well deserved.
I agree, so thank you for the time, mayor. Thank you. Questions, other than that?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for allowing me to, um, get, you know, the, the dog, uh, from the outside being alone. Okay, next we jump to presentations, A proclamation, uh. What do you want to read it? Uh, proclamation, early childhood awareness month, uh, Mr. Velazquez and School, Santa Cruz School Superintendent of Schools, Miss. Mr. Velazquez, uh.
Early childhood education awareness month.
He's gonna read it, huh? Okay.
To raise awareness of and build public support for the importance of early childhood development and health. Whereas early childhood years are when the brain grows and develops the most. In fact, ninety percent of a child's brain develops at age five before they enter kindergarten. Whereas scientific research has shown that a child's experience in their early years affect how their brain develops. Research also has proven that kids with quality early childhood experiences do better in school, are more likely to go to college and have a successful career. They also tend to be healthier and demand less from the public welfare system. Whereas the goal of Santa Cruz County School Superintendent Alfredo I Velazquez in twenty twenty four is to raise community awareness about the support system Santa Cruz County has for families that have children from zero to five years of age. Whereas early childhood education awareness month is sponsored by the Santa Cruz County Superintendent's Office. First Things First, Mariposa Community Health Center, University of Arizona Cooperative Extension Family Resource Centers, Nogales, Patagonia, and Rio Rico, Child and Family Resources, Inc., Childcare Resources and Referral, Nogales, Santa Cruz County Libraries, Department of Development Disabilities, Santa Cruz County Unified School District Number One, Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District Number Thirty Five, Patagonia School District Number Six and Twenty, Sonoyda Elementary District Twenty Five, Santa Cruz Elementary District Twenty Eight, Charter Schools, Private Schools, Child Parent Centers, Inc., Nogales Challenger, Western, and in Rio Rico Head Start Centers, Preschools, and Childcare Providers. Whereas during the month of February, informative messages will be communicated to the community via social media, radio, signage, including Santa Cruz County School Superintendent Alfredo Velazquez promoting kindergarten preparation and the kindergarten enrollment process. Other messages will include how to identify and work with children with special needs and mental health concerns. Some activities, activities during the month include a parent educator retreat, professional development concerning the importance of physical activity on mental health, and early childhood art exhibition, and early childhood leadership awards luncheon. The Santa Cruz Regional Partnership Council of First Things First celebrates the young children community event. The University of Arizona Cooperative Extension Family Resource Centers promoting both behavioral and mental health. Mariposa Health Center promoting the importance of wellness checks, dental care and vaccines, and American Sign Language courses at the Nogales, Santa Cruz County Libraries. Now, I therefore, I Jorge Maldonado, mayor of the city of Nogales, Arizona, do hereby proclaim February twenty twenty four as early childhood education awareness month.
You have the floor.
Mayor Maldonado, Vice Mayor, Bujorka, City Council, Mr. Bermudas, Mr. Machado, members of the community, I want to thank you and city council. I want to thank you for all your support. This is a very important initiative, you know, as we're moving forward and talking about workforce development and economic development. Childcare is a critical component of this. We need to make sure that we, in the future, look at investing in childcare services for our young. We're gonna have a presentation by Mr. Young, Jennifer Argayos, U of A Cooperative Extension, and Francisco Padilla from First Things First. I want to thank Yara from Mariposa Community Health Center and Los Padres Director Gina Parra. I also want to say that on February twenty second, we are going to host the award ceremony. You will be receiving an invitation, and, uh, we look forward to attending. There's gonna be ten people recognized in the community, from doctors to community advocates, teachers, and, um, uh, students. So, um, without further notice, I'm gonna pass it on to Mr. Young.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak about something so important as is early child education awareness here in our community. Pretty soon, Mr. Padilla and Mr. Argoyos are going to do a presentation, and they're gonna show some numbers that are pretty astounding and scary for our community when it comes to early child education. I just wanted to mention one more thing. We also, um, we mentioned Gina and Yara, but also in the back, we have the library. They're denito, huge supporters of this initiative also. And also even have Melissa Gallegos in the back for my Los Padres program. So thank you for being here. And with, I want to mention, because Francisco may not have time to mention this, this Saturday, there's a huge event at Calabasas School. You're all invited. It's First Things First, celebrate the young child. It starts at nine, at ten o'clock in the morning at Calabasas. Uh, there, there's a huge number of organizations that are gonna be there with activities and different things for, for young children. So we invite you to attend. It's a really neat opportunity, and lunch is included, so you can go get a free lunch. So we'll start off with Mr. Padilla. Thank you very much.
Do I just click on this? No. Okay. So good evening, uh, Mayor Maldonado, city manager Bermudas, council members. My name again is Francisco Padilla. I'm the regional director here in Santa Cruz for First Things First. Thank you for, for this opportunity, um, thank you for the proclamation. We wanted to just briefly talk to you about the importance of early childhood education and what that means for, um, not only the city of Nogales, but our entire county and our entire state. It's really hard to follow such a nice-looking dog, I have to say, so. So what is early, uh, childhood education awareness month? So this is the eighth year that local organizations led by the office of Mr. Velazquez have partnered to raise awareness throughout the county on the importance of early childhood education. And, uh, what's our vision for early childhood education in Santa Cruz County and here in Nogales? We want healthy children, we want successful students, and we want thriving communities. I don't think anybody would argue against that, right? There's usually video here, but we're gonna skip it and just for the purpose of time. So the first five years of a child's life, of anyone's life, is, is the most important. Uh, the brain develops more, more rapidly than at any other time in a person's life. Ninety percent of our brain develops by the time we turn five. And while genetics has some of, something to, you know, to, to play into that, we also know through a lot of scientific research that the quality of a child's experiences, whether those are positive or negative, shapes how their brain develops. So what that means is all of these experiences that a child has before they enter kindergarten, if they're, you know, rich, full of positive experiences, loving family, you know, their parents read to them every day, uh, they take them to the park, they play, they go to preschool, high-quality preschool, all of those positive experiences are gonna impact how that child develops. The other side of that is if that child has a lot of negative. Say, um, they live in a, in a unstable household, maybe there's domestic violence. Maybe they have a parent who's incarcerated, a lot of different things, right? That could negatively impact that child. All of those negative experiences also help how that brain develops, right? And so what we want is those kids in our community to have all of those positive experiences, so that by the time they enter kindergarten, they're ready to succeed, right? We don't want our kids to start kindergarten behind, which we see, unfortunately. So here, a couple of statistics on, um, what our, what our children are facing here in Santa Cruz County. Um, one out of three of our, of our kids ages zero to five lives in poverty, about thirty-eight percent. Two out of three children eligible for preschool, some three and four-year-olds, don't attend preschool. And three out of four children don't receive all of the developmental screenings that they need to. So why do we want to talk about early childhood? Why is this important? As I mentioned before, um, positive experiences in early childhood improve kindergarten readiness. I mentioned that we want our children to start that first day of kindergarten, ready to go. Unfortunately, that doesn't always happen, right? But if they're ready to go that first day of kindergarten, they're gonna be able to keep up with their classmates, right? Third-grade reading scores. We know that positive early childhood experiences means that those children have higher third-grade reading scores. Anybody who is familiar with what that means for our school districts and for our kids, if, if a child isn't reading at third-grade level by the time they exit third grade, they have a really high chance of not graduating from high school. Third grade, we can tell what that child's gonna do in high school. We have higher high school graduation rates when we have positive early childhood experiences. Workforce readiness, obviously, that's something that we talk about and you talk about all the time, right? We need a workforce that's ready to go. And we also know that people are healthier and have better well-being when they have positive early childhood experiences. Excuse me. So the other side of that, what happens when they don't? And we see negative experiences? We see more children that go into special education and remediation costs go up because they're not screened early enough or because maybe they didn't go to preschool. They need services once they enter kindergarten, which is too late. We want them, if they have developmental delays, if they have speech delays, we want those kids to receive those services earlier, the earlier, the better, right? We know that those folks also may become more dependent on social welfare, which is a burden on everyone as taxpayers. Crime-related costs go up because these kids aren't reading at grade level. Maybe they don't graduate high school. They can get into different things, right? Not always good things. And incarceration rates can also go up because of it. So I'm gonna have, um, Jennifer talk about the importance of mental health in early childhood.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I think for time's sake, I'm gonna skip a little bit through the mental health. May get a little shorter, but each, um, every year for the past eight years during early childhood awareness month, we have chosen a different, um, topic to shed some light on. And this year, it's mental health. We know that it is imperative that our children get, um, quality mental health before they enter kindergarten. They're not entering kindergarten without all the baggage they have from their experience from zero to five. And so it's important, just as important, um, for adults and teens to get adequate mental health services as it is for the young children. Quality matters in childcare and preschool. We often refer to childcare or preschool as babysitting or daycare, but what we know is because our brains are developing at such a rapid rate before we ever get to preschool, the educational settings that those children are in are very, very important, like Pancho has said. Um, there are nineteen childcare providers and preschool providers that are, um, in a quality-first, uh, program, which is sponsored by First Things First. This is a quality rating system, so they go in, they look at the preschools, and they give them ratings dependent on different metrics that they have for quality. Um, we are very fortunate in Santa Cruz County to have some five-star preschools. Um, we also have several that are three or above. But unfortunately, um, in, in Santa Cruz County, we are considered a childcare desert. Um, the number of preschools that we have does not meet the number of children zero to five that we have in our community. So if every child that was three, four, and five wanted to enter preschool, there would not be enough preschool slots. So some things that we have to, uh, make up for that loss is a family resource center. You've heard me before, I present on the family resource center. There's a family resource center right down the street, if anyone would like to visit at any time. Um, you have a flyer with our contact information. Um, we see about four hundred and fifty families annually, and we make up for some of that loss. We teach parents to be their child's first teacher. We teach them developmental milestones and connect them to resources. We do a lot of referrals so that they can get the services they need before they get to kindergarten. Um, we have active home visiting programs. Los Padres is here, Mariposa Community Health Center has home visitors as well as Head Start. They, they go into the home, so if the, the families are high need and maybe they can't get to the family resource center, these, um, these programs are specifically have trained staff to work with them to, to kind of make sure that, um, their homes are safe and, um, they're well-informed about different types of parenting skills that they might need. And again, there are nineteen licensed childcare providers, including we have, uh, three Head Starts in Nogales and one in Rio Rico. Areas of opportunity, families scrambled for affordable, um, childcare. Childcare is expensive. It's not something that we want to skimp on. It is an investment in our future, in our community. And this is the number one reason that staff miss work is because they can't find childcare. And there are four, yeah, four point, four point five times as many children birth to five as there are, um, childcare slots. So thank you so much for your time, and, um, let us know if you have any questions.
I want to thank you again for giving us, giving us this opportunity to discuss the importance of early childhood education awareness. And I look forward to the day where city and county and our educational communities can make this a priority and that every child in Santa Cruz County will have early childhood education. Thank you.
Velazquez. Permission. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Sorry.
Thank you. We move on to Proclamation Reading Across America. Read on Nogales Week, March fourth through twenty twenty-four to March eighth, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Velazquez.
Yes. With me. Stand next to me. Can I just say?
Go ahead, sir.
I want to thank Ms. Patricia for all she's done to make this a great event every year. And I want to thank all of you who volunteer and read at our schools. The kids really look forward to it. She's done a phenomenal job with recruiting already. She just told me she needs a lot of volunteers at AJ Micho. I just want to also thank Danita for all you do at the City of Nogales Library. You have made a difference there and I thank you. And we look forward to the partnership with the literacy buzz. So thank you.
Thank you. Let me read the proclamation. Proclamation Read Across America. Read on Nogales Week, March fourth, twenty twenty-four to March eighth, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the city, citizens of Nogales stand firm, committed to promoting reading as a catalyst for our students' future academic success. Their preparation for careers of the future and their ability to compete in global economy. And whereas the Santa Cruz County School Superintendent Office has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of your, of our youth, grounded in the principles that an investment in early literacy is key to the community well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas Read Across America, Read on Santa Cruz County, and Early Literacy Collaborative will focus on increasing grade-level proficiency, promote reading as a critical pillar in the education of our community students. Now, therefore, I Jorge Maldonado, Mayor of the City of Nogales, Arizona, introduce theatrically endorse Reading Across America. Read on the, the City of Nogales and recommend our community to engage in programs and activities to ensure when Arizona children read, Arizona children thrive. And call on the citizens of City of Nogales to assure that every child is in a safe place reading together with a caring adult the week of March fourth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Mayor, may I, Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I personally want to thank you, Patricia, for all the hard work. I know you're very active and seeking readers. And I, I know that that really has made a big difference. Thank you so much because I know it's a lot of work. I know firsthand. Thank you, Patricia.
Next, we go to PEP Rural Institution, Dr. John Arnold. Go ahead, sir.
My name is John Arnold, two sixty Noggle Street, Patagonia, Arizona. That's same address as Grace's Gift and Candle Shop. And I'm also, my former address was Bankard Street back in the fifties when the caroms were there. And I was a member of the fourth grade of Lincoln School. So that's a little bit of history there. And then fast forward, uh, last year, the mayor and I were part of the Fundación Nonnatis Causa. We both received the Hispanic Regional Award. And that's where I kind of met the mayor. And most recently, he invited, we invited him to be our keynote speaker at our fifty-sixth anniversary of Project PEP. We started an old Chevy school bus named La Tortuga up here in the valley. And I was a driver mechanic and teacher, teaching Breslau migrant workers. And John, we know each other a little bit too. See each other every, every once in a while because we live pretty close together. But anyway, uh, the other thing that I wanted to share with you is that the mayor wanted me to talk a little bit about PEP. We're probably one of the most diverse nonprofits in, in North America. We offer services from almost every facet. I just returned from Liberia and Ghana, where we also have exported the models that we developed right here in this area. So in this packets that you have tonight, uh, we put together several things. One of our newer programs is Polaris. It's a human trafficking initiative for Southern Arizona using cell phones and WhatsApp to communicate the vulnerable populations to a national hotline. Just tonight, we met with the Nogales Community Center. We have initiated a new GED, Plaza Comunitaria's program because PEP is a Plaza Comunitaria organization under the Mexican Department of Education. So that is something we're very proud of. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is our micro loan program. In nineteen ninety-nine, we were honored at the White House with Bill and Hillary Clinton. And we were proclaiming the first community development finance institution in the United States. So this meant we could lend money to people that could not get money or opportunities to have a business. And since then, we put out about forty million, forty million dollars here in the border area and changed the lives of many people. One of the things that also we've worked with is the Dia del Campesino. We were involved in it, in that committee this year. We got a good start. We're going to have a better start in the future. But back to the micro loan program, what I'd like to do is something, remember, John, when I was, when you were mayor, we had some seminars and we had some educations, opportunities to bring prospective micro businesses together for one day, give them technical assistance, bring our loan officers there and those that want to proceed with establishing a business. So we would like to offer an opportunity that we partner to do a similar thing this year or early next year, where we bring our crew down to our micro-business folks. And we have some facility here at the city, invited prospective business people. And we see if we can't get them on the dream of having their own business. When we were at the White House in nineteen ninety-nine, we were there with Bill and Hillary Clinton and Secretary Rube. And I was sitting in the audience next to Senator Kennedy. And I looked around the room and there was seventy-five movie camera, TV cameras there. And on the stage was Maria Jesús Caxiola. She was a lady from Sandwich, Arizona. We'd given a five-hundred-dollar loan. And she was a widow with three children. And she was able to get a, a business, started selling Herbalife. And as of that date, when she was at the White House, she sold over a million dollars worth of products. And Bill and Hillary Clinton honored her. And, and so to me, that was a dream come true of an individual that everybody else had given, given up on. And as once said by one of the first ladies of this country, many of the dreams of businesses die in the parking lots of banks. And what we've done with Project PEP in nineteen eighty-five, when we brought the model into the United States from Monterrey, Monterrey Nuevo Leon, the model of microfinance, we've seen hundreds of micro-business programs. And now hundreds of CDFIs have gone forth and changed the lives of so many. And in our brochure, I'm just going to share just a couple of stories there. The, you see the semi there, that young man is a Somali refugee. He worked for a number of years in, in driving trucks. Now he has his own truck. The two ladies there are actually from the Navajo Hopi tribes. They worked as nurses for many years. Now they're opening their own clinics. And if you go in Tucson and some of the other, other areas that we're at, you will find out that many of those little ramadas, they're selling the tacos and things like that. They're funded by us. And so those are the kind of things that change lives. It also is a benefit to the city because these are the people that later on are paying taxes. And so it's a win-win situation. So I'd like to propose that we do a seminar sometime, just a one-day thing. We select ten or twelve people that are prospective business people and, and do that. The last thing I want to do is we're one of the leaders in North America in opioids. I just came back from the inauguration of President Bokai of Liberia. And we're actually providing, they're having a major problem with opioids and fentanyl, just as we are. And we, we put together this packet, which they'll be using. And this is probably one of the most complete packets on drug education prevention. Now, we have a coalition under PEP of one hundred and forty agencies in Southern Arizona that are bound together to fight against this fentanyl and all of the other drugs. If you look in here, you'll see some very good materials there. You're welcome to reproduce those. We are going into the schools. We're up in the Pima County area, out in Cochise County. We're also the largest public charter school district in the state. We, we don't operate in Santa Cruz County, but we do in Cochise, Pima, and Pinell and Yuma. And we also operate the Arizona Virtual Academy. We have nine thousand five hundred students that study online every day, kindergarten through high school. It's free and it's another opportunity to change lives. So we're about what we started with in the bus, La Tortuga Education. And all of what we shared with you tonight, I hope, will be a benefit. Look at our card and you'll find that we have in that particular card there, a website that talks about many, many other services that we provide. And like I say, we feel that we're partners. As a Patagonian, I'm very proud of Santa Cruz County. My wife and I were married here in Patagonia. My wife's from Ghana, that's why I have this hat. And she just arrived back from Ghana last night. She coordinates the Diabetes Education Prevention Program for that country. And we base out of Patagonia. We have a lot of really good things that work. Out of Grace's Candle Shop, we also collect clothing for refugees. We have also been working with many of the ones that are coming through from Venezuela. And there's a food bank up there. There's a lot of really great people in that community. And I, I think that all of us in Santa Cruz County need to realize whether, whether, whatever community we're from, we're all part of the familia to improve life. In nineteen seventy-eight, Cesar Chavez, Chavez asked me to create the social service arm for the union up in La Paz, California. And I remember one of the things that he said, he said, not only si se puede, but you have to remember si se pudo. And for the women, what do we say? Si se podrá. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything for? Anybody have any questions or anything for Dr. Arnold? Dr. Arnold, thank you for, for coming down. And we'll, we'll get together on a, on a future date for having that event.
And anybody at the GED programs, they can contact Nogales Community Center. We are taking applications, but also for Plaza Comunitaria.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next, we have, uh, IMD, City of Nogales Police Department.
Mayor and Member of the Council, thank you. City Manager Bermudas, city staff and the public. Thank you for that opportunity to present to you a short PowerPoint presentation on some highlights of the, the department. It's my honor and pleasure to do this on behalf of the, the members, men and women of the police department. We're going to start off with this presentation, heading slide, that is going to highlight the areas I'm going to touch base on. Talk briefly about the mission, vision, philosophy and goals of the department. Short presentation on the staffing, recruitment and retention.
Chief, can you put the mic a little bit closer? Thank you.
I'll make it higher. Am I going to start again or just continue? Okay. All right, I'll talk about, like I said, the mission, visions and the philosophy, goals of the department, the staffing, recruitment and the retention, some community outreach that we're experiencing. Customer service is our, one of our core services and some department highlights that include the crime statistics also. And of course, the twenty twenty-four fleet. I'm just going to touch base on the bottom sentence of this slide. But if you read them, there's a mission statement, there's a vision statement, there's our philosophy, there's our goals. But the most important part of this slide is, is the bottom sentence where it says, "Our mission, vision, philosophy and goals are collaborative effort by the men and women of the Nogales Police Department." This is what we, we, our ethos is, we, we live by this. And sorry, if there's any questions during the presentation, don't hesitate to stop and, and we can discuss them a little in more detail. Currently, the, the staffing that we have at the police department is we're allocated seventy-eight positions, fifty-eight or so armed positions that include the following, chief, assistant chief, three lieutenants, five sergeants, nine corporals and thirty-nine line officers. There's also twenty support personnel, which includes twelve communication officers, two parking enforcement officers, an evidence custodian, two evidence custodians, excuse me, three records clerks and one administrative assistant. Currently allocated personnel, as mentioned, there are fifty-eight sworn, fifty-three are filled and we have vacancies in five. That currently fluctuates, increases and drops with the people being hired and people leaving to, you know, other positions. Our support personnel, we have eighteen positions filled, filled, sorry, and two vacant. We're hoping to fill these in the next few days because these are for one communication officer and one parking enforcement officer, which we filled one of our sworn officer positions through that parking enforcement officer position. Recruitment and retention, that's, that's a challenge that not only this department, but also other departments throughout the nation, including also what the chief sergeant mentioned before in his presentation. It is, it is a challenge that we face on a day-to-day basis. But we're collaborating with Human Resource to see if we can continuously recruit for certified officers. That means officers that are ready, uh, street-ready, entry-level officers and support staff. We also continue to develop and enhance our recruitment engagement strategies. And I'll highlight some of the points that we're trying. We announce basic vacancies internal and external in all media platforms and sources. We have officers attending career, job and safety fairs, putting the Nogales Police Department's name out there and, and hopefully we can recruit some, some positions to be filled. Our police recruiter, uh, we started now what's called an applicant engagement contact and checklist, which basically means more involvement from start to finish from when they first apply and when they eventually get hired. That was something that we, we, you know, we certainly missed because we lost potential applicants during that process to other agencies. And now we're engaging them a little bit more aggressively, hoping to keep them involved with our position. And then we have a working partnership with Human Resource in promoting positive relationships with external organizations like at local colleges and at military entities. We noticed that some places do provide officer entry level when they have that certification from the, the college or in some cases from the military. Recruitment and retention incentives. The police department is working collectively with the city manager's office, the Human Resource Department and Finance Department to address recruitment and retention concerns. We discuss options and some of them are monetary sign-on incentives. That's when we're bringing on a new officer to the department. Monetary retention incentives to keep an officer onboard with the department because, you know, we do lose them as other departments. So we're competing continuously with other agencies to keep them onboard. And they're, you know, they're offering great incentives. So we're trying to step up our game and be able to hold on to some of these employees. As I currently am talking to the city manager, there is an effort to update our salary compensation study. It's in the works and I know that that will play a big impact in, in the recruitment and also the retention of police officers and support staff. Stimulus incentives prove to be effective in the private sector. Once again, I had this discussion briefly with the city manager. And I'm kind of talking like incentives that will hold on to employees by having them not have to pay certain benefits that the city currently charges the employee during increments and steps during their employment. So hopefully that's something we can look at and provide that incentive to our employees. And once again, updating our comprehensive benefits package, which includes several things from like education assistance to, uh, take-home car programs and stuff like that. And then we have the four-day work week, which currently is in implementation and. And then we have the four-day work week, which currently is in implementation and it's currently active and we're getting some positive feedback by the police officers. Our communication center is working that kind of schedule, but it seems to be something that they want to revisit and I'm open to that because it's all about making sure that employees happy and willing to come to work. So we might be changing our communication center to working five eights, so which is five days a week, eight hours. Next thing I'm going to touch base on is our community outreach. If you guys haven't been or heard of, we have Coffee with a Cop. It's somewhere where we pick a location that's willing to support our Coffee with a Cop for that day. It's usually a local restaurant and we have them supply coffee. In some cases, some kind of pastries or goodies to that nature. And we just hold that at that location and we invite the public to come and attend. Like I says on the bottom sentence, it's no agenda, no speech, it's just a chance to ask questions and get to know your officers. And what I mean by your officers, it's their officers. And we do have great success with it. You can see some of the pictures. This was one of the most recent ones that we had at the cop's favorite place, Dunkin' Donuts. Okay, it was a joke, but. But you can see that was great success. There's, you can see that they're setting up in the first picture and then we have officers talking to the public and interacting. It's a great program and it's been successful. I can add kudos to city manager Vermulis for bringing that to us and we'll continue that as long as we have success with it. We also have what we call the Citizens Police Academy. And just for those who are interested out there in the public, it is going to be starting here in the next month or so. And that was one of our most recent graduating class. You can see there's a few city employees there. But what's a great, once you see, it's a great way to build the rapport with the public, educate the public on what their police department does, gives them an opportunity to learn the way to volunteer in the future. And we actually had some success where some of the people that attended the Citizens Police Academy became employees of the police department too, actually. One is an officer that's currently on military deployment and one that's an officer at the police academy and that she's going to graduate in a couple of weeks. And then we also use technology, you know, we're enhancing community outreach through technology and it's an effort to connect with our community. We use all the media platforms you can see out there, the Facebook, the Instagram, the Twitter. We also have an opt-in P three tips platform, which enables the public to actually get something on their cellular phone and provide tips to the department. It could be of anything, it could be of a crime or it could be, you know what, there's a lot of speeders in my area, things to that nature. And it's available through those app stores that you see posted down there. Later in the future slides, you're going to see something similar to this, but a little bit more department involved. Customer service, like mentioned earlier, that is our core service is to provide customer service to the city of Nogales and the community. Some of the digital online services that we currently provide are our online police records requests. We do digital fingerprints to the community for different reasons. Digital records operations, that's once again, like we're going to a digital-based records archiving where we're getting rid of the hard copies and everything's going to be going to a cloud-based file storage. Once you request a police report, you just follow the instructions that are on the city of Nogales website and you drop down to the Nogales Police link and it's pretty user-friendly. I know that there is an effort to actually update our city website, so I'll probably even make it more user-friendly. Rave, this is going to, something that's going to be starting here in the spring of twenty twenty-four. Then, like I said, in a couple of weeks. What this basically is, in a nutshell, is the ability for the police department to modify other public safety agencies about major incidents, traffic accidents, what we call beyond the lookout attempt to locate when we're looking for somebody that's missing or wanted for some type of crime. And anything that's a planned event, that's friends, can be like a big event that the police department or the law enforcement agency is holding. If you see on the bottom phase two, it's going to be the community notification. That's where we're going to do the similar notification, but to the public now, which involves city planned events, whether it be planned and hopefully not many emergency ones, i.e. like floods or things of that nature. Other events that are planned through the city, parades and related events, Fourth of July. We let the community know. Any plant construction, we'll work closely with our public works, street departments to notify the public that there is some plant construction in their areas or road closures that do happen suddenly through an emergency situation. Now we're going to the department highlights, which also include crime and call for service statistics. We have a public information officer times two, which is Sergeant Mesa and Corporal Batris. You can see here Sergeant Mesa talking to one of the local reporters. They also facilitate their communication through using social media platforms, which is Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. If you guys visit our Facebook page, it's a pretty active page that we try to keep constant new information and/or information that's pertinent to the public on there. We have three, what we call school resource officers, but one happens to be Officer Duran as a dare officer. Officer Steinman is assigned to Nogales High School. Officer B Calderon is assigned to the Wake Carpenter Middle School. And Officer M Duran is a dare officer that she goes to all the elementary schools and teaches the dare program. They're a vital asset, as mentioned earlier in one of the presentations about education and the interaction that officers have with the students. These officers, for the most part, are liaisons and try to keep that rapport with them. When there is an effort to have some enforcement action, we try to limit that to officers that will go and not hopefully break that rapport that we have with them and not have these officers engage in that type of action. As you saw earlier, we have K nine Donna, retired, there she is. And then we also have K nine Brown with his handler, Officer Florida. I can only say that this is a great asset to the department. They provide great support to our patrol officers when it comes to handler and officer protection, narcotic searches, I mean, they're second to none. There's nothing that beats a dog when it comes to looking for somebody or trying to find drugs. I mean, they're amazing. They have sense of smell and hearing that is, you know, you can replicate. We're currently obtaining a second dog to replace K nine Donna through an officer that's going to be donating it from his business that he's a member of. So we're going to be getting another dog, K nine Loki. And I'm not sure why they picked that name, but if you're into Marvels, that'll tell you everything. It's going to be cost-free to the department. We're going to send an officer that's been selected to the training here at the end of the month. And once he completes the training with his handler, we'll come and present Officer K nine Loki to you guys and his handler, Officer Garcia. Another highlight, and this is a big one that I won't get really the touch base on it, but it's that ten million plus grant that was awarded to the city of Nogales Police Department. And I just want to recognize a few people that were instrumental in getting this grant for us. As you see back there is Mr. Joe Baring, he's the president and CEO and do it all for Datacom. Com supervisor Steve Sneed also was an instrumental part of this. And with the support of the council and mayor and back then, Police Chief Vermulis, we've successfully received this grant and we're going to start actively getting it going, which you'll see later on in one of the agenda items, the first step of this. Mutual Link and Raptor, this is something that the schools, which includes NUSD one and the Santa Cruz Valley School District obtained. And we were going to become part of the Raptor communication enhancement that they currently have active. But in the process, we found out that the county received a grant for public safety enhancement, which is called Mutual Link three sixty. And what this does is just, in a nutshell, it just increases the real-time communication ability between the police department or public safety and the local schools. And this communication allows for, like I mentioned, real-time communications, which could be used and hopefully not when it comes to active shootings, when they do have lockdowns, emergency events, incident notifications and communication. And also for planned incidents, if they're having a big event like a graduation or a football game that's, you know, that's going to draw a big crowd. Any special events that are planned can also go out to the public, as mentioned earlier, through rave, but this is a little bit more internal between the school district and the police department or public safety, like parades and the Fourth of July. Calls and crimes for service statistics. And all this slide is kind of a little tight to see, but I'll just highlight the white paper there indicates what we had in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-one. And it includes crimes that are violent nature and crimes that are more property-based. So if you see in twenty twenty-three, and I'll knock on anything, we did not have a homicide. We did have one in twenty-two and we did not have one in twenty twenty-one. And if you go down the line, you can see that we had rape, assaults, sexual assaults and robbery. So our crime statistics are pretty low and hopefully we plan to keep them that way. If you go down to the non-violent crimes, you know, we do have an issue sometimes with property crimes, whether it be theft or burglary. But we're working on it, we're trying to get better and our exposure out there is increasing to try and limit this. If you go to the left side of the presentation slide, you can see in twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, there was a slight increase in arrests. Also, what we call total cap calls is the calls that come into the police department that generate a cap document. So it's, once again, there was an increase of point nine nine percent. Reports, which is the total DR lying there, there was a decrease of five point eight percent. So we went down by two hundred and five reports. Total law incidents, which is something that was generated as a call for service, but did not, at that point, require any further action, like a documentation or investigation. You can see we decreased by three point zero percent. And then the total calls received to our comm center, you can see we went up by twelve point seven percent from fifty-one thousand to fifty-eight thousand. So we are busy, the department is constantly receiving calls for service. And thankfully, the majority are of that violent nature, but they do occur. And here's another slide that's a little bit difficult to read, but you can see that we had a total of fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fourteen calls for the year twenty twenty-three. Total answer calls was fifty-five thousand and sixty-seven. And the last number, three thousand and thirty-eight, which is called the abandoned calls. That means a call that was received by the department, but they hung up before we answered it. An officer usually does go to those calls to verify if there's anything, if there are any problems. But luckily that most of the time, it's usually an accident that they didn't dial on purpose or, you know, it's a kid playing on the phone. And on the bottom, you have the answer time call standards that are a national standard. So you can see that on left, that ninety-nine point zero two percent of our calls are answering within the fifteen-second standard nationally. So we're at ninety-nine point zero two percent. So we're almost at the cusp of answering the calls for service within fifteen seconds or less. Peak hours, more to the right, is we're at ninety-seven point ninety-four that we answer the calls for service before twenty seconds. So I mean, kudos to our communication center for, you know, for doing an outstanding job and taking care of business there. Now I get to the fleet. And I'm not going to read the column on the left, that's just for reference there. But there's currently sixty-four police vehicles, five which are police motorcycles. And they're assigned to different assets in the department from specialty units that include parking enforcement, evidence, firearms, criminal investigations and administrations. But the brunt of these police vehicles are assigned to the patrol division. And with the support of mayor and city councils currently in pass, we continue to replace the department's older vehicles that are no longer cost-effective with new vehicles. And we will continuously continue to aggressively identify and pursue grant opportunities that will allow us to purchase police vehicles at no cost to the city. So the bottom line intent is to replace police vehicles every fiscal year. And that's the end of, like I said, the short presentation that covered some topics. So if there's any questions on any topics that anybody wants to discuss.
Councilman Gracia.
Chief, it was an excellent presentation, very detailed, applaud you for it. I have one question regarding the four tens. I know dispatch has an issue with it. Has it worked out as far as having more officers per hour out on the streets if we're doing four tens instead of five eights?
Yes, and actually it's twofold. It actually does allow for more officers to be out on the street, but also kind of reduces the overtime. In the past, when we've had officers that were working five eights, as you're aware, sometimes we have shortcomings because we have an officer in training or sick or whatnot and we have to call in personnel to cover and it's obviously it's overtime. So with this four tens, we eliminated the overtime considerably. There is still overtime occurring for special events or details. And the most overtime that is being utilized at this time is Stone Garden, which is a whole different line item it's coming from. And that's a touch point, a little bit on Stone Garden. We actually have finished up our twenty twenty-one Stone Garden grant and we'll be starting our twenty-two Stone Garden grant here in the next few months, once it comes to mayor and council for approval or presentation and approval. So the answer is yes, it's been very beneficial. The officers do enjoy it because it gives them three days off. They do work a little longer days, but gives an opportunity to utilize those days off for either overtime or enjoying, you know, a long weekend.
Councilman Bonilla.
Chief, thank you for the presentation. Right now, they touched on the Stone Garden grant. Did, so we haven't received those, what was it, twenty million or something? After the, after the Title Forty-two had expired or something, then we get a big chunk of money on that?
There, it's coming. What I heard, I checked last week because I was advised that our current grant was finalizing as far as the expenditures were concerned. So the present time, it's going to be on the way. That's what I've been told by Arizona D E M A or DHS, I should say. And once we do receive it, we're going to review it and make sure that everything is in line that we have to make sure is it. And then we'll present it to, obviously for review for a city manager and our legal department and then finally come to you guys for review and approval.
And one more question, on those officers that you're down those five sworn-in officers, you're missing five, right?
Correct.
Are those already in the academy or you have no one currently at the academy right now?
No, actually, those are five vacant positions that are unfilled. We currently have nine officers that are at the academy. Five that are going to graduate from two different academies at the end of this month, three from one and two from a different one. And we have four that just started within about a month ago. So hopefully, if everything works out well, we'll have five officers plus advisors that go to the academy to counsel and be part of the academy's faculty during that time. So we should be getting seven officers back here by the end of the month. And then down June timeframe, July, we should get four officers plus that counselor that's up there with him right now back. But like mentioned, it's a challenge. My efforts with my staff is that we constantly are recruiting and putting the word out that Nogales Police Department is a great place to become an officer. You're not just a call taker, you're actually an officer that does police work.
How many vehicles, do we have all our vehicles or do we still have someone back order?
We currently just have two. We did apply for a grant, a border security grant that we submitted to see if we can get five unmarked cars for our criminal investigation division, but we haven't been told that we have been awarded that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Chief. You managed a great job and a great presentation.
Thank you, Senator.
Next, we move to number six, financial monthly report. Eight, December twenty twenty-three financial report. Mr. Vermulis.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you is the financial report that was prepared by Finance Director G Moeman. However, Ms. Moeman is up at a conference right now and she won't be able to present. If any of you have any questions on the report, I can always, she's available by phone to make any clarifications if needed. make any clarifications if needed. At the rear, at the back of the the last page of the report is the revenue sales tax comparison for August three, December two thousand twenty-three for the downtown Morty and Mariposa, downtown Morty and compared to Mariposa White Park Drive businesses. And that's the last page right there. And I believe you had requested it vice mayor?
Yes. Mayor.
Go ahead, Consulman Montiel.
Mr. Vermones, I have a question. Actually, it's just a comment. You know, I'm always looking at the bed tax, and, you know, I really wanna congratulate all the hotel owners and because they're doing a great job. If you've noticed, the bed tax went down a little bit, but from fifty-one thousand to twenty-five, but still a good amount coming into the city. So somehow, maybe as a city manager, you can let the Chamber of Commerce, for example, and the the hotel owners in some way, you know, that we really appreciate that the revenue coming in, because that sustains salaries and everything else we have to do here at the city.
I will.
Thank you.
Consulman Bonillas.
Mr. Vermones, do we have any payouts this month? Everyone, anyone retiring any payouts? I don't see it here.
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of, consulman.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Vice mayor. Okay, I think we're good. Mr. Vermones, we have, you know, having more time to look at it. I think we'll come back to you or Ms. Jean on any questions.
Absolutely. Any questions, just email me or give me a call, and I'll get you the answers.
Thank you. Now we move to communications. Reports, A, update and discussion, number one, National Guard Armory Building City Administration. Mr. Vermones.
Mr. Mayor, mayors of the council, just to inform you that as of the twenty-fifth of January, the Arizona National Guard building on Western Avenue has been deeded back to the city. The property on its own was deeded to the state of Arizona back in nineteen sixty-three, with the condition that once they finish using it and they don't need it for their purpose, which was the National Guard building, they would deed it back to the city of Nuevales. So on the twenty-fifth of January, we got it back. We're in the process of doing an assessment, facilities, went and met with their facilities. We have the keys already. We're doing an assessment and make sure that it's safe and habitable. I know that at one point in time, there was a shooting range in there, so we need to check for lead. We need to check for lead-based paint and maybe some asbestos tiles that were in there at some point in time, or still in there, and any other safety issues. So at the present time, we're doing an assessment, and I'll get back to you with, once it's done, and, you know, have some ideas as far as to how to utilize that building. However, one of the downfalls is that it's in the five-hundred-year flood zone. So we need to really be careful with that. Check with FEMA, check with the county, dot our i's cross our t's before we invest money into into that building to make sure that it's habitable and legally. We move in with whatever department or or anything that we want to do. Right now, what the parking lot's being used by Nova, they're doing construction on Western Avenue, so it's safer to have all the equipment and all materials in there under lock and key at night. So that's what is being used right now. So officially, the twenty-fifth of January, that building belongs to the city of Nuevales.
Is it being loaned to Nova, or are they renting?
It's being loaned to Nova. They're doing the work for the city.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. We move to item two, possible possibility of starting adult softball league. Consulman Bonillas.
Thank you, mayor. Gracias, Mr. William Armenta and Mr. Jacob. Startle, please come up here to the podium. Thank you for coming, guys. Just, Mr. Can you please just, I know that you came, you spoke right now the call to public, but can you just real, real quickly, just expand on what what your goals are, what you want to do, exactly what the what your goals are with the league? How many teams, how many members do you you have lined up?
Right now, we can, we have ten, ten, ten or fourteen, something?
Yeah, about ten to fourteen teams for men's, and that's not counting co-ed. We could get at least maybe about three or four teams for co-ed as well.
So where do we want to go with this program? We want to, again, you know, it's, it goes back to, you know, actually, I have a question for all of you, everybody here. What brings you together? Anybody, you know, what brings you together? Exactly. So family. So if your son or your daughter is playing either softball, basketball, any sport, the community comes together. So really, you gotta emphasize and take into consideration, maybe it's me and Jacob, the face of the program, but behind us is the community, because they believe in us. Again, I've been playing for X amount of years, you know, and again, we're trying to give back something to the community. And again, it's it's a family structure, you know? Again, your grandkids, your wife, your mother, boyfriend, husband, whatever, we all come together to that comfort zone, softball, volleyball, basketball, whatever it is. So our our vision and mission is that bring the community back to back then where softball was. It's not just a sport, not just a game. It's, again, our family, it's the community coming together. So.
Stress reliever.
You know, again, it goes back to with the family. We all get together there, you know? And again, just trying to give back to the community, you know? Maybe it's not me, maybe it's not him, maybe it's sitting in the gallows, whatever it might be, but give us the opportunity. Don't stifle us. Don't be that person, you know? Again, you come, and you knock on the door, and you ask for our vote. We believe in you now. We're asking you to believe in us. You know, again, it goes back to, it's not just the face that you're seeing right now, the community is behind us.
I'll ask you a question, and I know I've talked this over with, you know, Parks Director, Director, Ms. Ms. Travis, you know? We've talked about softball. I always want softball, you know? I promote softball. I played it, you know, great, great world championships with Herb Wisdom and Fast Pitch, like where we used to have softball, you know, Fast Pitch. You know, I promote it, but then again, we have to get together, we have to idolize the times, we have to, you know, we've got, like you said earlier, I don't control Little League. I run, I try to help and run it, you know? Mr. Vermones is part of the Little League. We tried to help families, you know, from age four to sixteen, every year, and every year, we have less volunteers, less support, but we, those kids cannot play at ten o'clock at night, cannot play at eight o'clock at night, especially because we play during the week, okay? And I've talked it over with Ms. Travis, you know, it's very hard, you know, if you guys don't accept the times, you know, I cannot push the kids to play on weekdays when they have school at eight, nine, ten o'clock at night. You guys are adults. I know you, we work, we all work, and, you know, if you guys have softball games, I enjoy going and watching them. I've been there. You guys see me, I even umpire it. I did that. It's just getting together, you know, about the dates, times, let's go, let's move it. There's no, I'm not against it, but we gotta get together on the dates and times, you know? We gotta, you know, it's very hard to be more flexible with the four, you know, because those fields are basically used from basically four to thirteen-year-olds. They're not used by the fifteen, sixteen, those come over here in Memorial Park, but it's very hard to, you know, especially the the four to seven-year-olds, T-balls and coach pitch, they're the ones that use it the most. Once we get to fifty-seventy, which is basically eleven to thirteen, you know, so right there, the two age, big age groups are four to six, which is T-ball, and six to seven, which is coach pitch. We cannot push those kids to play at eight, nine o'clock at night, that, you know? Two years ago, Renee, was it, or, you know, you guys asked me for X days of the week. I gave them to you. I gave you the days you guys wanted, you know? I moved around, you know, the the schedule for the kids and made it workable for everybody. But, you know, I don't see why we cannot play, you know? Basically, like I said, those kids will not, you know, you guys could have, it's two fields, two fields, it's one-hour games, that's what you play, huh? One-hour games. You could have an eight o'clock and a nine o'clock game, no, no issues.
But see, the problem here is.
Problem is.
What is your timeframe for the kids? They don't play till seven o'clock, right?
Normally.
I mean, practice.
Normally, they start at five-thirty, because everybody wakes. Five-thirty to six-thirty, six-thirty to seven-thirty.
Okay, so how many days out of the week do they practice?
Well, they play normally.
I mean, practice, I'm sorry.
Practice?
Yes.
That's up to the coaches. I don't control the practices. And normally, unless the fields are not being used, they will use those fields to practice. But if I got game schedules, it's games, you know? Basically, it's all games. It's very rare that, you know, that they practice in those fields unless those fields are not being used.
Because I had the program three years ago. I made a contract with Parks and Recreation Department, and towards the end, yes, I asked for some dates that were moved, and the dates that were given to me were either Friday or Saturday. And again, the players, which are the parents of some of those kids that play for the league or practice, cannot come and play on Saturday because they work. So there was a, there has to be a counterbalance, you know? I understand where you're coming from, I understand that, but again, it's the community.
Yeah, I understand.
So.
I understand. We could work it out. We could work it out, you know? I don't play on weekends. Why do I not play on weekends?
Well, that's, that's.
I don't play on weekends? Why? Because it's hard enough to have volunteer coaches, volunteer trainers, volunteer staff, and force them to be, you know, spend the week and the weekend out in the field. That's why we don't play weekends.
Yeah, but that was the the timeframes or the dates or the days that were handed to me that were available, and I told.
So I'm not telling you, no, I'm telling you, this is what it's what's available.
Well, yeah, you're giving me seven to ten o'clock, which is fine. Okay, now, you know, what we.
Seven-thirty to ten o'clock.
Seven-thirty to, you know, again, it can be the ten o'clock, because it's it's an hour. So it's from seven-thirty?
Eight-thirty and nine-thirty. You have two games, two fields. Or you could play at eight, or you could play at nine.
Nine-thirty to ten-thirty, because it's an hour.
I know, but you could either play from seven-thirty to eight-thirty, one game, eight-thirty to nine-thirty, another game, or play at eight to nine, or nine to ten. That's two games per field.
Yeah, it's just, you know, again, it's like you said, getting together and giving us giving you the dates, you know? This date, and the program's gonna run, you know, two months, so it's four weeks.
Normally, the only days I play fifty-seventy, which is the day, the one that we have the regional tournament, is basically, it's either Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday. And the reason I gotta do that is because those kids, because it's eleven to thirteen years years old, we do not play majors, which is ten to ten to twelve at Little League Park. So those kids that are eleven and twelve can also play in the in the fifty-seventy, and that way, that's the only way we have enough teams. You know, we've done that for ten years already.
I see.
So, you know, we don't play eleven-twelves over here, so all the eleven and twelves with the thirteen-year-olds, because we wouldn't have enough thirteen-year-olds to have have enough teams to play against themselves. So, but it's only four teams, it's only two games a night, you know? I could use one field for that. And, and, you know, that's the only days that I would need to say, hey, on Tuesday and Thursday, from this week to that week, we're gonna have fifty-seventy.
That wouldn't interfere with our program, by no means. You know, we could have it Tuesday and Wednesdays. If that.
You guys, let's name a day, let's put a time, we'll get with Ms. Travis and work on on times and all that, you know? You know, I haven't done the schedule, you know, I don't even know, we're barely having our first Little League meeting on Monday, you know? Hopefully, all forty-nine teams, it's forty-nine teams that we have, forty-nine teams, you know? That's hard to juggle, you know, and it's hard to to, you know? We try, obviously, we try to, I try to put them, you know, like when 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 we don't have the eleven and twelve-year-olds, I try to take the T-ballers and, you know, to play to the, for them, it's like playing in Yankee Stadium, going down to Little League Park, you know? There'll be those flexible times or dates when we, I could tell you, you know what? On this date, that date, you guys can play. Hopefully, we'll have the chair park available for for, you know, some of those games, you know? At all, I've never had this park to to play.
Sure.
So that's gonna be another option. So we'll work at it. I'm not, I'm not against softball, I enjoy softball, you know? I've been confronted on openly for baseball also, you know? I got no problem with it. Go ahead, Consulman. Gracias.
I just want to say that I'm a big supporter of both the Little League and the softball. Mr. Vermones and myself played many years, like we were younger, but nonetheless, we had a really good softball program with the city, and I don't know where it went or why it went away, but it seems to be just a scheduling problem, and if we can get around that, I think we can enjoy both.
Yep. Mr. Vermones.
Just when when Mr. Vermones, can Mr. Armenta and Mr. Sorek get together with you and Ms. Travis, start ironing out the the scheduling issues and.
And, Sir, Armenta, you can give me a call tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
At the city, and I'll get together with Ms. Travis, and we'll.
Either Jacob or either me, either one.
Either one of you. You can give me a call, and we'll coordinate, and we'll get together and work something out. It's not a problem.
And guys, you know, when when I first, you know, when we picked up the fifty-seventy, and they put, you know, they put the grass infield, softball had deteriorated for two years at least, because of, you know, issues with alcohol and other issues, you know? It's not me that took it away, you know? And I'm not trying to take it out, you know? I I used to, like I said, I used to play it, my son plays it, you guys know my son, he plays it. You know, it's it's fun, I enjoy it. So I got no problem, it's just talking and getting together on times and all that will make it work.
I understand that, that Mr. Mayor. Again, we can only, you know, try and prevent certain things from our community, but again, we can't control them. If we say, which I've always addressed. But again, we can't control them. If we say, which I've always addressed, there is no drinking, no drugs. When you cross that gate, there is nothing allowed, no alcohol, no drugs. And I put that, and it could be a testament, and you can even ask your son also. I was, I am very strict in situations, scenarios like that, because at the end of the day, it's our face that's on the line. And it's the program and it's the community and they understand that what's at stake. It's not just the game again. It's the community.
Yeah.
They're not gonna risk that and they haven't. So if they drink, that's on them, but again, it's an issue that could be worked. I mean, I could talk with Roy, I mean, I mean, not Roy.
Sir Jimenez?
Yes. You know, back then, because I worked with Parks and Recreation Department for a subcontractor for 22 years. So I've seen a lot of directors come and go. So I know, I know a lot. We could have routines, police department go down there, you know, have the K-9 unit. There's a bunch of things that could come into play. And again, it's just sitting down. And yes, gentlemen, the program, you could go ahead with the program, like I said. I'm not trying to put nobody down, but I do emphasize that we want, like I said, Parks and Recreation Department to be just a facilitator for the parks. We run the program.
Yeah, we can make it work as long, you know, like I said, you know, my limitation is scheduling with those 47 year olds.
Yes, I understand.
I could throw you, you know, normally I have six to eight teams and, you know, I wanna, those are the most, you know, that's the age you get, you know, Theo, grandpa, grandma, the neighbor and everybody. You know, you're talking about bringing in crowds, they bring in the crowds. And, you know, that's the last people I would like to upset in our program, so, you know? And in a way, that's why I protect them to play early and get out early, you know? Why don't we play baseball in December, November? You know, it's to grow for them. But there's a lot of little details, we'll work it out and we'll get softball going, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Councilman.
I just had a question. I heard that you already had like 10, is this men's teams right now in Coed?
Yes.
Is this just slow pitch or fast pitch?
No.
Slow pitch. It's all slow pitch and also, there's like, me, I'm a coach and I have two teams. I have one team for Coed, one team for men's. Right now, it's been more than two years that I have to take my team to go play all the way up to Tucson. Some of my players are already above the age of 45 and they play senior league as well. They play senior league up in Tucson on Saturdays. They play another senior league on Sundays, plus they play the men's and Coeds on Fridays. And I remember like back in the day, we used to have tournaments here. The Nogales Park Department threw tournaments. When the Budweisers, they would come in, PD would involve, local law enforcement, first responders, we would throw tournaments. We just wanna get back the program to the whole community, so the whole community could all join.
You just mentioned the three days, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, but those are.
Yeah, those are tournaments up in Tucson.
They play leagues up there.
Here locally leagues. I've been playing softball here for more than 15 years. Here in Nogales, we used to have men's on Monday, Wednesdays, Coed Tuesdays and Thursdays. But we do not have any problems with the kids, especially comes July when you guys have the 50, 70, when you have teams coming from Hawaii, Alaska, out of state. We don't have problems with that. We could, you know what, let them take over. It's all them. We'll go support them. We'll cheer for them. We'll just do it on.
Yeah, obviously, those, those, those dates are segregated, you know, not even Little League plays are segregated for that.
And we try, we try to get the, try to play before Man Tum season.
I had another.
Go ahead, Mr. Grealish.
I got a feeling that you're gonna all have to sit down and talk about getting more fields. Because talking about Coeds, I mean, women love to get involved. And I think you're gonna have more Coed teams than just men's teams before you know it. But good luck. The more the mayor, the better.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Again, it goes back to family. I mean, without due respect, I played with Gabriel Doyle, Eli, back in the day, you know?
I was on my way out, buddy.
So again, you know, I played since 1988. I offered my services to Parks and Recreation Department in 1990. So I have history, you know, a lot, I know the game, in and outs, I know it. I run tournaments up in Aina, up in the sports park, Maricopa. Up there, I do 45 teams. There's conference players, meaning those get paid. They have bats under their name. I had 20 teams of conference players, 10 teams of women conference, and 15 teams of E or D, meaning they're lower divisions. So again, it goes back to where I know outlets, meaning their sponsors. There's the owner, like I know the owner, Charles from Proton. I know Suncoast. I don't know Macon, Worth, there's Easton. But at least it's a start where, again, it goes back to, I see talent. There's talent here. There's talent in Little League. So I'm just trying to do something that's never been done, you know? And giving back to my community at the same time. The game has given me, so I'm still playing. They won't let me play AAA. I play majors. So nobody till right now has won a world champion here in Nogales, other than the kids. So, I mean, that has opened the door for me a lot. I'm still sponsored, I forgot to tell, I'm still sponsored also by Rowley, its gloves. You know, I have that for our young adults, you know? There's something at the end of the tunnel that I can offer. There's no guarantee, but again, if you put the time and effort, you'll get rewarded, anything that you do. And again, it goes back to our community. You know, the money is being taken from here to Tucson. Where the money can be here, where we can host tournaments. And that's where Mrs. Lisa Montgill said, you know, the hotels, that's money that stays here. We bring teams out of state.
Mr. Mayor.
It's, it's not just the game now.
Go ahead, Mr. Vermais.
In the interest of all the information, you know, Redmondson, when we used to play and everything else, and hopefully we can get back to it. I'm pretty sure we can work something out. So with that said, give me a call tomorrow and we'll, we'll figure something out to bring that softball back to Nogales.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, Nogales Wash by Hojocum Drive, Councilman Bonilla.
Yes, just a little quick background on why I put this on the agenda, Mayor and Council. A couple of years ago, Mr. Kissinger and I, the former. Sure.
Mr. Navarro?
Jimmy Navarro. Jimmy, you bring your kids and your students back in here real quick?
Yeah, definitely.
I just want to point out and highlight Mr. Jimmy Navarro. He's the public safety instructor for Rio Rico High School. He's also teaching at Pima College. These are some of his students. They wanted to be aware of what goes on in a council meeting. It's a great exposure at this time for them, so I hope that you've gained some knowledge from what we do up here. And I really appreciate you taking your time and all of you guys' time to come here and sit at least an hour or so with us. Would you like to say a couple of words really quick?
Go ahead, Jimmy. Thank you.
And I'm sorry I called you out.
My name is Jimmy Navarro. I teach for the Rio Rico High School. These are college students. I do teach high school on public safety throughout the years. I mean, I've known a lot of people from the PD and it's very helpful. And this, this group, it's Pima, and the class is Issues in the Criminal Justice. So I wanted to see how you guys handle business here and how the arguments back and forth with that, that they happen, which is, which is good, which is good because they get to understand the concepts and how everything's run. Well, thank you.
Mr. Navarro, and I apologize, Lady Siro. Yes, my secretary had given to me, I had not recognized you out in the crowd. You know, but I do want to thank you all, students, you know? All of our council meetings are open to the public, you know? Yes, thanks to Mr. Navarro that brought you here, but you're welcome to come to any council meeting. And normally, the first Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM. Welcome to come and that's, you know, if you guys have a comment or anything, feel free, you know, there's, you could do the call to the public, make a comment and come to the podium, you know? If you want information, if you want, you know, just make any comment, feel free, all right? So welcome to the Galo City Council meetings and I apologize, Mr. Navarro, you know, my.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Good job. Keep on studying. Go ahead, Mr. Bonilla.
The reason I, Mayor and Council, I put this on the agenda, a couple of years ago, right, Mr. Guerra? We had a meeting, we had a joint meeting with the county. It was that one summer where we had, we got hit real hard with the, with the monsoon season and we had some erosion on the, on the wash, on the, the IOI is on Hojocum. And we had, we had, what I thought at that time was a fruitful meeting. We discussed many things, many possibilities. But basically, if I remember correctly, Mr. Guerra, the county asked us to get the 404 and to get the permit from Army Corps of Engineers, am I correct? And it took us almost a year, year and a half, Mr. Guerra, to get that? Yeah, and so we finally got that. Actually, we got a, an emergency permit from, from Army Corps of Engineers, if I remember. And so we finally went back, or Mr. Guerra went back and showed them the, all the permits that we needed. And Mr. Guerra, if you don't mind explaining what happened, because it's been a while and our, and our wash is eroding away and we need to fix it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I will share with you the report given to the board supervisors in last June. And this is, this is the permits requested by them.
Shows basically the Army Corps of Engineers permit that they requested to have first. Before helping us, they said, okay, I can help you one, but we need the Army Corps of Engineers permit and 401 and 404. That's ADQ and federal government. So I hired a consultant from Tucson to have a biological report and an archaeological report and many other reports. I paid that report for my professional services budget. It's part of the requirements from the Army Corps of Engineers. I also requested some kind of a build design by a local engineer, which is the owner of Inova. He's a professional engineer. And he also presented stamp drawings prepared by them. And so instead of going through the process of hiring a consultant to prepare the plans, it's better to go in the route, it's quicker. It is a professional drawing and a professional design. So I presented this to the board supervisors in last June. And I also updated the quote in last September. But again, I have attended a couple of meetings, but I have not heard any response, positive response from them. One of the concerns that they expressed to me is that the way that it is, I think their attorneys, they see it like they are investing flood control monies in the Hojocum road. They don't see it as they are fixing the bank of the channel. And that was, I guess, a legal concern that they had. And since then, I have not, you know, heard any other news from them. Yes?
Councilman Do.
You didn't bring it to your attention about the danger of the IOI being ruptured and spreading all that, all the way to.
Past the filtering station down here in Rio Rico.
Oh, pasas.
Yeah. Well, in this location, the IOI is far away from the, from the edge of the road. But the most important thing that I pointed to them is that it is so dangerous that I said, like, 14 feet or more vertical cut next to Hojocum. So if we have, we have been very lucky that in the past, these two years, that this erosion has been there for over a year now, over two years now. So if we have more heavy rains, this could be, go away easily. And then, so we'll have to close Hojocum. And as you know, Hojocum is, is one of the main corridors in the city. That Monte Carlo relies on this corridor heavily when the train is crossing. So I pointed all of those issues, but it seems like, because I mentioned it, the Hojocum, that my concern was Hojocum. And they said, we don't, we cannot invest money into our road. So that is the difference in opinion between them and us.
Councilman Bonilla.
For council members that are not familiar with this issue, when we had that, that, that meeting, none of this ever came up, right, Mr. Guerra? It's only when we went back and Mr. Guerra presented what they asked for. And, and that time, it was, it was, I would imagine it was a little bit cheaper, right, Mr. Guerra?
Well, this is the third time that I have been updating the quotes and every time, as you know, it's higher and higher.
So my question to Mr. Guerra is, what has the county asked you to do in order? Did the county ask, offer to help you or have they not? Because when we last spoke, two years ago, they were willing to, to help us out with some, not all of it, but with some of it. Now it seems it's nothing. And so it's, and just so that you all know, we just can't go in there and just fix it. We need a bunch of permits, there's a bunch of red tape. And I feel that we don't, what should we, what is your recommendation, Mr. Guerra?
Well.
I don't want to wait, I don't want to wait, come next monsoon season? We have the Little League tournament, we have a bunch of stuff lined up and I would really like to have this issue fixed.
I believe, and thank you for putting this in on the agenda, because I think that, I only believe, I really believe that this issue needs to be discussed between elected officials, I think. I have done all my efforts to, you know, my best efforts to comply with what they asked for. I don't know what else to do because I have been attending meetings and I don't have any response yet, so. I don't know. As you said at the beginning, they committed to help with at least one place. But I don't, I have not heard any, any response at all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I've been in contact, actually, we built a good relationship, Jesus Valdez, the county manager and myself. And we've been talking about having another joint meeting like we did probably eight months ago. And so I'm taking some notes here, so that could be one of our agenda items. So we can talk about it and come to an agreement as far as to whose responsibility is, granted that they have the funding for the flood control district. So we can talk about that and I'll call Jesus tomorrow morning and try to set something up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vermais.
Mr. Guerra, give me some clarification. Underneath the site of Hojocum is the IOI, right?
The IOI.
Where the erosion is.
On the other side of the road or more or less, it varies. It is meandering, like it's loaded to, part of the IOI is inside the parking lot of public works and then it goes to the middle of the road farther north. But it is like maybe 30 feet apart from the, from the wash, the IOI.
Okay.
Doesn't the IOI on the northern part of Hojocum actually is a lot closer to the road?
Yes, sir, but the place that I raise, or I ask for assistance, the IOI. Yes, sir, but the, the place that I raise, or I ask for assistance, the I O I is not there.
Right. But, but yeah, we got to look ahead that, you know, the way, the way the water effect that it has when it's flooding and once it starts tearing in, times it keeps going.
Oh, yeah.
And before you know it, it's over there.
Right, right now, Mr. Councilman Doyle, the issue is, is the erosion on the side. As far as the I O I goes, that right now is, is.
Safe.
It's safe, it's safe. But the 911 issues that we're having right now, and thank God that we didn't have a lot of rains this past summer. But the ones that, you know, cut it, you know, we were really scared was two years ago. And so I don't want to wait for another monsoon season. God forbid we have another one, because two years ago, we had 50, 75-year-old storms. And so, you know, we're just, we can't afford to just sit back and hope that we don't have a huge monsoon season. We have to take care of that, I think we have a lot of, a lot of events, a lot of things vested in this community. And we cannot afford to have Hojocum Road be closed down. It's just, I, you know, we have the baseball tournament, we have a lot of things going on there, we have the Fourth of July celebration there too. And, and just along the traffic, Mr. Guerra, that's, is that a high-traffic road?
It is, it's one of the main collectors.
Okay, so like Mr. Verbuys said, well, we'll look into it and see how we can have a joint, the joint meeting. I know we've talked about it, so thank you.
And just to add a little bit more, as you might know, these are not the only sites that deserve attention. There are other sections of the watch that requires attention also.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to item eight, discussion items, discussion and possible action. Number one, Mariposa Wash, Councilman Monia.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. The reason I put this on, I don't know if you guys have visited or seen where on Mariposa, on up by industrial. There's a, there's a wash out in the back where Crescent Electric is. And that, that wash has eroded completely, it has scoured, am I correct? That's the correct word, Mr. Kissinger? So, and I saw this issue maybe two, three years ago. And I also went to the county and see what, what they can do for us. And they came back and said they couldn't help us because we own the wash, Siro Nogales owns that wash. So I'm talking with Mr. Kissinger last week, we saw some satellite images. And so what we discovered is that back in the 90s, that wash was running straight. And after 2000, Mr. Kissinger, was it? After 2000, then we started seeing like a horseshoe, and that's where it was, it's scouring where these businesses are at. So what we, what we discovered, we think is that as, as when that place started getting developing more, they just dumped all the, all the debris, Mr. Kissinger, am I correct? And so it happened, it clogged up that, that area, and so it made that horseshoe and it's diverting the water in that direction. So, Mr. Guerra, did you get the quotes for, for the heavy machinery?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you please come up here and explain? Okay, thank you.
So, Councilman Monias is correct in regards to, based on the aerial pictures, it seems like the erosion started in 2002. So that means about 22 years ago. But if we see other pictures from, let's say, on page six, I think. On page five, in 2015 is when we see a mayor, a significant erosion. So since then, so it's about nine years, has remained almost the same erosion. So that's a good thing. But we requested quotes for a company from Tucson. And we were told that we can have an equipment, a bigger machine. It's a, it will cost the city $2,500, $2,500 a week or $9,000 a month. So according to our street crews, they can do this job, hopefully, within two weeks. So, so we'll have the equipment next month, no, excuse me, next, next Monday. And then here in the wash. And we'll, what we are planning to do is to remove the debris and also put the channel to former prior conditions in 1996, as much as we can. So in other words, is have the channel straight in that section. So that's the plan for next week.
Councilman Doyle.
The, the wash crosses over the cemented area, I guess.
Correct.
Is it causing any undermining?
Yes, a little bit, not, not that significant, but we believe that once we straight the channel, it will help a lot to. At least stop the erosion closing to, getting close to Crescent Electric business. The good news is that there is some kind of existing slow protection in that area that is helping a lot. It's, I don't know, somebody else in the past, they did a good job with the slow protection there. So, but I guess that this is an easy solution, I guess, for us.
Freeway on the left is, that 19?
Excuse me?
The freeway on the left.
The first picture? The, the date is on the bottom of the.
Yeah, but the freeway on the left.
Yeah, the, the left is the freeway, yes, correct. That's Mariposa. And then the, the road here is Industrial Park Avenue. In addition, in additional to the improvement of the channel, we are also thinking to install some kind of garrel next to the road to protect any vehicle from falling there. So it's a difference about four feet next to the road. So we are planning to install something, a safety feature.
Go ahead, Councilman Gráez.
Last meeting, we approved a parcel split or new subdivision in the industrial park area. Is that anywhere close to this area or nothing to do with it?
I don't remember that one. Oh, it's, it's another.
On the other side, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other question?
So this, this circle or horseshoe like Mr. Monias addressed it is after it goes over the what, over the industrial park?
Yes, sir. And, and there is a lot of concrete debris just next to the channel. So that is what is causing the deviation of the water to the left or to the north. But in the same way, we can extend the life of that erosion on that side, close, close to Crescent Electric. Another thing that happened a few years ago, Unisource has a pressurized gas main in the, on the, on the other side. That they had to relocate that gas main because of the erosion. They had to put it about 20, 30 feet far apart from the existing location. Maybe if you go to the place, you might see hanging yellow pipes but are abandoned. So that's another thing that caused the erosion.
And you said you already have the machinery for this?
We'll have it next Monday.
You already know where you're going to get your money from to pay it and everything?
From the street department.
Mr. Verbuys.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, members of the council, my recommendation is that if it's in our budget, that we go ahead and do it. Because I understand the issue that we have with the county right now as far as to jurisdictional issues. I passed by there today, and I'm confident that this summer, or with the rains are coming this summer, hopefully, we do get them. That, that wash or that embankment, it's going to erode even further. So I think if we can mitigate that and we do it within our budget for a streets department, I recommend that we do that, Mayor.
So you got, you don't need funds, you got them.
Well, the, for the renting of the equipment and deviation of the channel, no. We might need later on for, the banks over there are huge, are like vertical cuts. At this point, we don't have any idea how much it will cost that. But that's something that we can rely on, the Santa Cruz County, I believe, later on for a bigger project. At this point, just to, to fix a little bit the deviation of the water and causing the erosion on Crescent, to close to Crescent Electric. That would be the main issue at this point, the priority.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is to mitigate, to fix it, so it won't erode any further, we have those funds to do it right now?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
We're going to get it from the street.
From the street department.
Okay, so, so what you're talking about, that we don't have any funds, that's for further improvements?
Further improvements.
Okay, so what you're, what you're going to get on Monday, we're good with that. You have the funds, you have the manpower for the equipment, material, whatever we need.
Yes, sir.
And it's within our budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And are we taking funds from other projects that we have within the city?
No, it's a reserve that we have for rental of equipment. Sometimes we have to use equipment for other jobs, and then we are planning to use that money there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, that said, I move to approve this, this. Process of, of cleaning up the, the wash there. With, give Mr. Verbuys, you know, what you're spending and everything, because we're, we're working blind. And there's no numbers on what you, what you're spending.
Okay.
You know, and where you're getting it out of. So I move that, you know, Mr. Verbuys takes lead on all the numbers of, of the work that's going to be developed on the wash. And we stay within their expenses.
Mr. Mayor, I'll meet with Mr. Guerra first thing in the morning, and we can go over his numbers just to make sure that we're within our budget.
I have a second. All in favor? All against? Motion passes. Item two, Wade Carpet and Sewing Pool, Councilman Monia.
At this moment, Mayor and Council, I'm going to table this agenda item due to the fact they're still working on some numbers, am I correct, Mr. Verbuys? And I want to present the correct numbers. There was a little issue that we were not aware of, and so they're going back and doing the numbers again, and we'll do it on the next meeting.
So we'll move to table this?
Yes, please.
Okay, all in favor? All against, motion passes to table. Number nine, liquor license. A consideration and possible action of liquor license 2024 dash two, approval of recommendation of the issuance of a special event liquor license application for Ms. Margarita García Felix of Lourdes Catholic School for a fundraiser, March 6, 2024. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Number 10, being consideration and possible action of Order 2024 dash 02 dash 005 and order of the Council of City, of the City of Nogales, Arizona, approving the third amendment of the lease between American Tower Assets Sub LLC and the City of Nogales. Any discussion? All in favor? Right, all opposed? Going to item C, consideration and possible action of Order 2024 dash 02 dash 006 and order of the Mayor and Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, approving the termination contract with Joe L. Machado. That's motion, I put. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Gráez.
Before we go ahead on this, I just found out about this yesterday afternoon after a revised agenda was sent out, and I still don't know the reason behind it. But it does say that it's in the best interest of the city and its residents, of which I'm both, and also a representative of the residents and the city of Nogales. So I would like a little more information as to why we're dealing with this. I made a big deal when we first offered this contract, saying it was a no-holds-barred contract, full payment for whatever reason. And now we're doing the same thing, we're going to end up paying off six or seven months that are left on this contract. Five, because two of them are, he's still going to be here for 60 days. So now we have an issue, is why are we throwing away money again? The last five, we're probably going to have to have another attorney, so we're double paying attorneys for a job that is being done properly in my eyes for lack of any other knowledge that I might have in this. So I think it's in the best interest of the community to understand why we're taking this route, why we put this on the agenda. And I would also like to hear from Mr. Machado himself to see if he has anything to say about this. So I would like to yield my time to him if he wants to step up to the podium and give us his take on this, so that we can be transparent and so that the public understand what's going on here, because we're throwing away money. I made an issue of this when we first appointed him, and now we're just doing the same thing. And we keep saying, oh, the last administration did this, the last administration did that, but now we're doing the same thing. So the definition of insanity, as we all know, is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. So let's get to the bottom, I want to know, because the community wants to know, and I think we have a right to know what's behind this. Why are we terminating a contract unless there's cause or something that I am not aware of?
Well, if you could read the contract, you know, the contract reads, you know, that we, we have the right to termination with a 60-day notice. And Mr. Machado will be and is exempt of appeal provision of the city of Nogales personnel manager. He, you know, shall be paid his lump sum. And it's basically, you know, for termination for, for any or no reasons.
I, I understand that, and I understand the contract completely, and I'm not disputing the contract, I just want to know why. You said in the order, it's in the best interest of the city and its residents. So I would like the residents to know what is behind this move right now, because I don't agree with it. I, I think we're throwing away money, as I said, we're going to have him still for 60 days, plus pay off the remainder of the contract. In the interim, we have to hire another attorney at God knows what rate. We've been giving out contracts like there's no tomorrow, so we, we need to be fiscally responsible to our constituents, especially in an election year. Why are we hiding stuff, what are we afraid of, what are we keeping from the public? Let's let them know why he's being terminated, unless there is a problem with that. I think we should give him an opportunity to speak also, and I'll yield my time, because I can do that, and have him express his concerns or why he believes that his, his contract is being terminated. We had a lawsuit from a prior city attorney just recently, because he stated that we didn't give him an opportunity for not renewing his contract. So are we setting ourselves up for another legal situation? I, I mean, we voted on stuff against legal advice in the past, which I think was wrong, and I voted against it, but that's not the issue here. I just want to know, and the public has a right to know, why this is happening. And all of a sudden, we had an agenda come out on Friday, it wasn't on there, all of a sudden, yesterday, within the, barely within the 24-hour notice, we get a new agenda with no backup documentation. So unless everybody here on the council is privy to additional information that I'm not, how can they make? how can they make a decision based on nothing? Because they don't have a packet that supports this, at least I don't think so, unless they've discussed this
No, this
before and maybe, I'm not, I'm not saying it happened, but maybe there's a violation of the public meeting law, but
Mr. Gracias.
I wanna know what is
I put this on the agenda and I put it with with the determination that I, you know, I've had special or certain needs of our city attorney that have not been made. You know, I don't wanna get into the reasons, but you know, I think to move forward, I think we have, we have we have to terminate our contract, you know, because we have, you know, this contract says no reason necessary.
I understand that, but we're going back to the same thing over again. Why are we spending taxpayers' money and not being fiscally responsible on something that we don't have cause? If we do have cause, let's air it out, unless Mr. Machado is opposed. Mr. Machado, you opposed to talking about this in public?
No, absolutely not.
So why don't we do that and let the community know what's going on really and why are we getting rid of him? That's my concern and I think I got a legitimate concern and it is in the best interest of the city and its residents to know why, unless you think otherwise or we need to hide something.
No.
Because if we're all voting on something
I got nothing, I got nothing, I got nothing to hide except, you know,
Then if you don't have
I've got, you know, I've got my reasons.
Okay, let's let everybody know, members on the board here have a right to know what the impending question is before a vote. How can we vote on something that we don't know, other than you wanna terminate the contract?
Councilman Doyle?
Yes, Mayor, I wasn't here when the contract was drawn up, but it amused me that it was so favorable at the time, especially by his assistant now writing the contract, which really protected Mr. Machado in every way. But besides that, I've been sitting here for the past year and I guess I've been seeing some things that that I'm concerned with and that's why I make my second right now. And I'll mention them, you know, it's, I, they've led me to lose faith in Mr. Machado leading the, that department. I think that a change would be good for the citizens and for the city of Nogales. We need more accountability in that department. Again, you know, over the past year, I've seen a lot of flip flops in different items that we put on the agenda. We've been not clearly giving the legal counsel that that I thought we needed. And right now, that's all led to to just not doing his job the way he should, as other past city attorneys have. I personally think that when that contract was drawn, he would have had the decency of saying, no, let's put it in a better light. Of course, I wasn't here, so, but but seeing these things go on and I'm concerned about the way the IOI is being handled. It's already passed legislation, there's nothing to reach an agreement on really, it's more of a formality of reaching that and putting it in writing. And like Mr. Machado said last time, we're waiting that if it goes to October or, I forget it was September or October, that we might lose the benefit of all that legislation. That's very irresponsible, Mayor. And there's some more items and I could start here, but no, I don't, I don't wanna make it a circus or, you know, like we're out just to point out all the negatives. I think we should give Mr. Machado that space of that we're gonna be fair enough, I'm not just attacking him on every issue. I mean, that's the way I I feel, but the worst, the worst part is personally, I've lost confidence in Mr. Machado leading that office.
Mr. Mayor? And we're talking about the contract. I was one of the people that approved the contract. Then we approved it and we were okay with the contract. Now we're complaining now? Past a year and a half, we're complaining? So why don't you let him, let us know what's going on? Something else is going on. Why didn't, you never mentioned that you were gonna put it in the agenda, at least a phone call to let us know. When I saw the last, the second time that you put the agenda on my email, I thought it was the same. But you know, just by curiosity, I went through the whole thing. At the very end, you put the thing about Machado. Something, I don't like it, I'm sorry.
I called him yesterday, I was putting it on.
But something else is going on.
You know, we're
Well, why don't you let me talk?
We're not advancing.
Is it a
And I was, I was not there when you guys approved the contract. I was not part of approving the contract. The contract, you know, when I saw it, it was a one side contract. Councilman Gracias.
Mr. Machado, there was mention right now about the IOI, but I believe that's a moot point because I think the feds have already agreed to take it over and I don't think there's any other agreements pending on our side. But can you please explain if you feel that you
There is
led us wrong in any situation or giving us bad advice or, I wanna hear from you
Yeah, me too.
what your take is on this?
Mr. Machado, please come up to the podium, please.
Mr. Gracias, there is an agreement pending with the IOI or otherwise
Ask Mr. Machado and I think I'm within my response from legal at this time. Under the parliamentary procedure rules, I still have the floor, you recognize me, I'm not out of order, I'm not being disrespectful, I just want Mr. Machado to answer my question as to what he feels is going on here, because I think he has a right to speak too, as well as the public. It's in the best interest of the public to understand what's going on here. So, Mr. Machado, can you answer my
Councilman Doyle? Mr. Machado is not part of the council.
I know he's not part of the council, but I am and I'm asking for his legal advice or his opinion
And I've got the chair.
which I've got a right to ask under parliamentary procedure.
I've got the chair and I've got
Well, you're, you're doing a misrepresentation of the chair then, because I have a legal right.
Okay, Mr. Doyle, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, there is no really rule that the mayor has to follow parliamentary procedure.
He was a former mayor, he was a former mayor.
If you go to
Oh, my God.
There, we follow it to a certain degree to follow a certain order. But you're the chairman, you have the voice and that's the way it is. If you don't, if you guys don't believe me, Mr. Machado, you check with your legal up there at the leagues of cities and towns.
Mayor? Mayor?
No, no, no. I've gone
Please, please, please.
Mayor?
Please.
I call for the question.
We have the right to discuss this.
A call for the question does not allow one councilman to stop the discussion. A call for the discussion is a motion that has to be voted on so everybody can see all your constituents who wants to cut the discussion out and who doesn't not wanna give me the opportunity to to respond to me, Mayor.
I understand that.
Okay, so
I think, I think
Put it on the record, who doesn't wanna, wanna give the real reasons that
Go ahead, Mr. Bodea.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Councilman, when I remember I came to the mayors and Mr. Doyle's and Mr. Bohorkes' in starting in ceremony here at City Hall, one of the things that they harped on was that they were gonna be transparent. However, today, it's a lack of transparency. So I failed, I don't not understand why we cannot hear from Mr. Machado. And we still have not gone, Mr. Mayor, an explanation as to why. What was the cardinal sin? What did Mr. Machado do? We got this like a Friday night news dump at the last moment. As a matter of fact, Mr. Councilman Gracias called me up, hey, did you see the, the, the agenda? And I said, no, they're just gonna correct a few grammar issues. He goes, no, check it out again. So I think it was snuck in, it was, it was placed in a manner where everyone is caught, was caught off guard and unless, I don't know how we can have the audacity to vote on this today when we don't have any information or unless, like Mr. Gracias pointed out, other council members have other information that we don't have. Are we gonna vote by, by, by proxy or what? What's going on? Why are we failing to be transparent with the, with our citizens? We got roasted with, with other issues and when we go into executive sessions, we come out here and we don't should discuss anything with the people. People wanna know what's going on, Mayor.
Okay, my last words, okay, and very simple.
I have a legal question. If I may.
Go ahead.
Am I within my right to request information on the dais as a sitting councilman from you or any other witness while I'm debating what I can and can't vote on?
You are and that's obvious.
And then why is my right being violated? Would I have, would I have recourse in this situation?
You may.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'll let you know. You know, Mr. Machado, very simple, two, two questions. Long time ago, I asked you, please be in my office to do the agendas, Thursdays and Fridays. Have you been there?
I've never been requested that, never.
I actually said it in the meeting. Yes, I actually said it in the meeting. I'm, I'm just asking the question.
Let me answer. I've been in your office when you told me specifically that you wanted the fire chief fired. You, I was in your office when you specifically told me that you wanted Letty Devan. Those, you remember those, Mayor? Those are the real reasons and I told you, I can't do that. You were upset because I refused to follow that. I told you that you had no business
You're talking, well
And you have no business with personnel, ma'am. That's the real reason here. Why don't we talk about the real reason?
This is the real reason why I can't work with him, because he's not working for the city.
Please, please, Mayor.
Okay? He's not working for the city. So I call for the question, I call for the question and I start.
No, no, no.
Yes.
There's, there's, it has to be a motion.
We already did a motion and we already had a second. I'd made the motion, Mr. Doyle seconded, correct, Ms. Letty?
No, that's for the calling of the question. You're, you're talking about the motion for the original
Yes.
for the original
So I call for the
No, well, when you, somebody called for the call for the question, that means that there is a motion on the floor to limit discussion. You want to vote on it.
Okay. Can we call for a question to vote on?
I just wanted to say, I, I, Mayor, I totally understand what you're saying. I've worked with Mr. Machado in the past and, and, you know, it's probably one of the things that, that he's a very cagey attorney when it comes to looking out after his self-interest. But, but he's, he's hard to work with and he doesn't always give us the right direction. So it all depends.
Like how?
If, 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 if you, if you have a good relationship with certain councilmen, yeah, they'll vouch for you.
Let me respond to that, okay? And My, my confidence here, my professionalism is not an issue and you know that. When you came to ask me for help when your kids were in trouble, you thought I was a good attorney. When you
That is, that is how
Bring that, bring that clear.
That is
Bring that clear. You guys were doing injustice
That is
it was a victim.
I was a good attorney, then you went to go
Okay.
And you were mayor, how about you, Mayor?
Okay.
And you went to go ask me for help because your son got a DUI.
Okay.
I was a good attorney, then it wasn't.
Okay, yeah, that's a wait, that, that was not, first of all, I was not, I was not asking you because you were the city attorney.
Mayor.
Okay.
And we can go on and
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, we can go on.
We can go on and on.
Okay.
Let them defend themselves, Mayor. But ladies and gentlemen, this is what we call
Mr. Bodea, I've got the floor.
I'm sure you do.
I make, I wanna call for the question.
Cannot call for the question legally, it's a motion, Mayor.
Okay, I wanna make a motion to call for the question, okay?
It's gotta be a second.
Second.
And then you have to put it on the record
Okay.
once the limit discussion.
Second.
Go ahead.
I have just one question. Why don't you let him go to the podium and
What are you hiding?
Why don't you do it? And we stop this.
No, no, no.
No, they don't want you there, why?
Because they don't want the
Why?
It's not that I don't want the real reasons on the record, it's, you know
It has to go on the
Mayor.
Just go ahead, Mr. Bodea.
You know, the contract's very clear and it's pursuant to the charter. It's very clear. Mr. Machado, your, your contract is very clear.
What does that mean? I admit, it's very clear.
Yesterday when I talked to you and you said, I got nothing to lose, you, didn't you say that? Yesterday when I, I mentioned that I was, had put this in the agenda, you said, you got nothing to lose.
My concern, Mayor, is not me.
I know.
I'm protected by the contract.
I know.
And, and it's the same provision in my contract that the city manager has. So don't, don't be criticizing that provision because you approved the same provision for the city manager. Okay, I'm not concerned about me, I'm protected. I'm concerned about the people you're gonna target when I leave. And the real reason here is you wanna target people.
I'm, I'm not targeting people.
You wanna get involved
I'm not targeting, I'm not targeting people.
You don't expect the charter, you don't expect the charter in the city code and you like it when I tell you that you have to follow the city charter in the code.
Mr. Machado?
No reason.
No.
A man about it.
I am a man about it, I am a man about it.
Mayor.
If you wouldn't give me the legal opinion as to how the city should go, I'm all open.
Mayor.
But you're not doing it.
And how many times have I given you opinions of what you can and can't do? And you ignore those because you wanna do what you wanna do.
No.
That's the real reason here.
No, we're not.
Let the people know about it.
Mayor, you know, we're exercising our authority pursuant to the charter, okay? And that, that Okay, we'll call it contract, it's a contract. And that's the agreement that we entered in too. So, and it's very clear and Mr. Machado knows that.
I know it's very clear, but give you reasons, you know, what can you say? I want my constituents to know what we're doing. Cameras off.
Yeah, exactly.
And the, and the contract says no
Give them a chance, Mayor. Be transparent.
The contract says for no reasons, right?
So you're doing it for no reason?
No. So I moved to where we
Give them a chance, Mayor.
Checking it, motion it.
Give them a chance to speak on the podium, Mayor. Be transparent, don't be a hypocrite, come on.
Need to vote?
Don't be a hypocrite.
There's discussion on this second motion, right?
Yes.
There has to be discussion on
Call for the question.
Called for the question, right? It was seconded, now there's discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, I still believe before we make a decision, we need to be well informed, public needs to be well informed, so we're back to the same issue. I'm arguing the same points I did on the other motion because this is a motion to go to a vote, but I get a chance to also speak my mind and ask the question. It's very clear that there's something else underlying here. I don't know what and maybe, I don't care, but I want the people to know that we're doing our due diligence up here and voting on something we have knowledge on. Unless you guys already have knowledge, more knowledge than I do, of these concerns. You bring up issues of not getting the right legal advice, yet we vote against legal advice when it's given to us and then because it doesn't go your way, it doesn't mean it's not right. If we have issues with that, then let's bring an outside attorney or investigator or something and get to the bottom of this. My, my rights to speak are being violated and I think as a sitting councilman that is responsible to the public, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to let the public know, I'm doing everything I can to let you guys know where our money's going, why we're doing things and why they won't let me speak. If I need to go to the Attorney General's office to preserve my freedom of speech, which family members as well as you have fought for and now it's being mitigated here because I don't know what reason, all I wanna know is the reason, the true reason, even though the contract says there should, doesn't need any cause. I don't care about that. I brought that up when the contract was first initiated and now we're back to the same thing. So I just wanna go on record with that.
Councilman Doyle?
Mayor, and I just wanna say clearly, I, I've put up with a lot of Mr. Machado's attitude and, and how he shifts around and, and how he shifts around and tells us one thing and changes in the same moment to another over this past year. And, you know, that's why it's, you know, you, you're gonna put an attorney like him that, that, that already has that knowledge of, of speaking and changing things from one moment to the next. Where does that leave the truth? Where does that leave how we've observed and learned, at least I have, in the past year of how you operate?
In the past year, every single council we need has been reported.
That's right.
Okay, and I challenge you.
I challenge you.
On any of those recordings and the public seeing them, tell me.
Yeah, definitely, they're there.
Completely wrong. Let them determine what we're talking about.
You know what I'm talking about.
That's what they're, you gonna say something?
No.
One last thing, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, I just think that we're doing a disservice to our constituents. We're not being transparent. We're not being transparent. And I think that's what's affecting the city. I believe Mr. Machado is a man of integrity and you don't like it when he tells you what you don't like. And, and just not allowing him to defend himself, that speaks volumes of the situation. I think, I, I, I think it's bogus for whatever underlying reasons you may have to get rid of him. I would like for you to share and look, and look at our constituents, look at that camera and say that you're being, that you're being transparent, you're not being transparent. I fail to see you're transparent. Let them, let them talk here at the podium.
I will not talk. Okay? Thank you.
Let me tell you the real reason.
No, you're, you're vulgar, Mr. Machado.
We had a good relations at first, right?
We always.
No, but let me tell you when it turned sour, George. When I told you that your inauguration expenses were illegal, when I told you that your travel expenses were illegal.
That is out of the question.
The relation changed.
No? Okay. We call for the question?
Yes, I call for the question.
Roll call vote, please. How about I?
I.
Nay.
No.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion passes.
The motion passes that there's more discussion.
Okay, now we, I know, now we go to vote on the order.
We've only done this.
Okay. Thank you. Now we go to vote on the order. I vote, roll call vote again. And I vote.
Sir, may I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So Mr. Machado still has 60 more days.
Yes, ma'am.
In office, huh?
Yes.
And I assure you that in spite of all my disagreements, I'm a professional. I will continue providing my services, my staff will be doing it. We'll provide the services just as we have in the past.
Thank you.
Professionals and we will continue to do so in spite of what people want to do.
And I have another just comment. When you mentioned that he's good with whoever he wants. So you're telling us three, that he's very, very, very happy and friendly with us three?
That's what's in.
So he's, he's a lawyer for us three, not for?
Well, did you just say that?
Hey, Ms..
Since he's been here.
Mr. Doyle.
Thank God.
Mr. Doyle, now we vote on, on item C. And I roll call again, aye.
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 Nay.
No.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion passes. Now we go to the mayors and council report on events. Mr. Gracias.
I got nothing.
Mr. Doyle.
What, I'll, I'll mention the, the trip that took out to the Tojono Ora Nation for their parade and rodeo event this past week. I was very glad to see you over there, Mayor. Again, I think they're some of our neighbors and good friends that we need to keep good relationships with them. But aside from, from networking over there with them and it was more of having a good time with them. They have a, a different sense or outlook on, on life and their culture is very vivid and alive, colorful and they have a beautiful spirit. So I had a great time and there was many things to do out there and I hope we continue that relationship in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Melendez.
Mr. Doyle, you're talking about where?
The Tojono Ora Nation.
No, I, I wish we'd be the same. I wish we can, I wish you could say the same thing about Nogales. Okay. And we're still gonna have the event on the 13th. Your, well, all seniors are cordially invited. We're gonna have it at the gym from 11 to 3 o'clock. And we've been getting help from everybody. So we were expecting 100 people. Now we've had to figure out at least 150 because a lot of people are calling. They're, they'll be there. So all seniors are more than welcome to be there. And Friday, we'll have the first meeting for the Fiesta de Mayo. And I'll let you, I keep you informed of what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Melendez. Councilman Gracias.
I just want to thank Mr. Bermudas and Public Works Department for getting out and getting the Boys and Girls Club their heaters. It was a cold start to the winter and they were really faulting, they had fallen behind, but we got it done. They really appreciate it and I do too, thank you.
Councilwoman Montiel.
Yeah, I just want to let the public know, which I will let the schools know and the public know the mayor, through his office, is gonna have a Easter egg hunt on March 27th. But more information will be coming to the schools. We'll be delivering flyers and we're already talking to the superintendents and the charter schools and all that good stuff.
Bye, Mayor. Okay. I was very busy in January. On January 11th, I attended Randy Hayes' retirement party from Segal. He did a lot of great jobs for Nogales, Monsieur Guerra, you know. You could attest to that, industrial park and bridge and, you know, other pavings around the city. Then on January 15th, met with Mark Sanders from ADAT in Phoenix discussing, you know, solar lights, discussing the cleanness of our highways and Mariupol Road. Also discussing on, hopefully we get a visit from Ms. Todd, the ADAT director. On March 6th, excuse me, January 16th through the 18th, I attended the United States Conference of Mayors' annual winter meetings up in Washington. Let me tell you, it was a great, great meeting. I really liked it. You know, got to meet Ms. Chrissy Canagao, which is the Deputy Secretary of DHS. She actually, besides talking to me over there, the following week, we, she was visiting Tucson and me and Mr. Bermudas visited her in Tucson. So that conference is a lot of very bipartisism conference that is very well for anybody to attend. I really look forward to the coming years on it. On January 3rd, attended Governor's KB Hobbs' state report in Tucson. Also met with some of Governor Durazo's people. They just switched new representatives in Phoenix. Now it's Ms. Smith, Liliana Smith. On January 24th, we met with Port Authorities here in Nogales. And Governor Hobbs was present. Then on January 4th, also in the afternoon, me and Mr. Bermudas went and met with the Deputy Secretary, which she was very happy to hear, you know, straight out of us and what the migration issue was and all the deals, or deals that we were having and how, you know, glad that we told her, you know, how everything was functioning. And actually, she was here in Nogales on the 25th. On the 25th was when we met with the stakeholders and Governor Hobbs up at the port. Unfortunately, that they, it was unfortunate and good that Mexico's water storage was backed up and running very hard right in front of the big city port. On January 26th, I was at an interview with a young lady from Desert Magazine from Salt Lake City. Just also wanting to learn about the migrants and the situation, how we're handling. January 27th, thank you, everybody. Thank you, you know, Parks and Rec, PD, everybody for a great event with the Nogales Buffalo Soldiers. They had a great event down at, at the cemetery. And then at noon, it was over here at Karen Park. On January 28th, 29th, I had the pleasure to meet Ms. Alicia Barzanas, which is the Secretary of State for Mexico and met our local guy, Secretary of State for Arizona, Adrian Fontes, up in Phoenix. Also had a meeting or actually was present at a conference where both Ms. Barzanas and, and Governor Durazo and Governor Hobbs were present. On January 30th, we had the visit of the Arizona Office of Tourism Director, Lisa Urias, here in Nogales. And, and we met at Casa's Lake, you know, Cosina Lake. And it was, it was very informative and, and she's willing to do some support and to grants and stuff like that for businesses, businesses here in Nogales. And like Councilman Doyle said, on February 3rd, Saturday, I was at the Tojono Nation event. It was a nice parade. And then it was the rodeo and event with them. So ongoing, you know, I think we're, we are working together, but I think we need to go in, in a better direction. That's all I've got. Anybody have any future items? Go ahead, Councilman Borelli, excuse me, Gracias.
Yes, sir, I'd like to ask City Manager, Mr. Bermudas, if you could get the next director in the hot seat and provide a report for us, see if you can follow Mr. Jimenez here. He had a great report today, but I think they're very informative for mayor and council and I'd like to continue to see those.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Montiel.
Mr. Bermudas, also. Mr. Bermudas. Yeah, now that we had two departments in preparation for the final, you know, when we get together for the budget hearings or the budget, what do you call them, retreat or hearings, whatever you want to call them. That way we hear how the department is run, their numbers, data and get all that information. So we'll have that. It's a little different from what, what I've seen the last three years I've been here. So we have all the pertinent, pertinent information and so we can make better decisions. So that was right. The next department, whatever it shall be, is fine with, with me. Thank you.
Councilman Borelli.
Mr. Bermudas, if you can provide mayor and council your one, three and five-year plan of action for the city of Nogales, please. If you can do a presentation next month, please.
Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Move to adjourn this meeting? All in favor? All opposed? Meeting adjourned.